Online today's meeting. Can I now ask the committee clerk Gillian McCoy to check that members of the committee present virtually can see and hear us?
Yeah, councillor Connor, can you just confirm that you can see and hear us?
Yeah, fine, thanks Jill.
Councillor Parsons, can you confirm that you can see and hear us?
Thanks Jill, I can see and hear everything, thank you.
Vicky Roberts has also confirmed Sharon that the live stream is up and running now, so ready to commence the meeting.
Thank you Jill, thank you Vicky. I'd like to remind members, officers and members of the public to leave your microphones on during the meeting until you want to comment. In addition, can officers also turn off their webcams unless you are addressing the committee? Once anybody has spoken, please ensure to mute your mic again so the audio remains clear. When I do bring you in, please unmute your mic and say your name and allow a brief pause while we ensure you are visible on screen. Is that okay for everyone? Thank you. So item number one, declarations of interest. Can I ask members and officers present to declare any interest relating to the main agenda item? Them? Thank you. Item number two. Liverpool City Centre Connectivity Scheme, City Bus Hub, Old Haymarket, Central Ward. Can I refer you to pages one to sixty of your agenda containing details of representations received in relation to the proposals? Pages one to forty-four of the supplementary agenda containing additional representations and pages one to nine of the second supplementary agenda containing officers' responses to the additional representations. Can I also advise the twenty-two video clips have been sent in. Due to technical difficulties, we are unable to play them during the meeting. However, myself and councillor Parsons have been provided with a summary of each clip with their details and we are familiar with the objections. So can I now invite the officers to address the committee on the proposals within the report?
Hello everybody, my name is Oliver Brown and I work for Amy on behalf of the council. I've been working on this scheme. So the Liverpool City Centre Connectivity Scheme is a programme of transport improvement measures and strategic locations across the city centre in supporting the economic growth of Liverpool and its position as a major visitor destination. Connectivity schemes aim to introduce traffic, improve traffic flow across the city centre whilst it providing better cycle links and more appealing environment for pedestrians, but focus on making walking and cycling the first choice for short journeys across the city centre in an attempt to reduce congestion. One of the main causes of congestion in the city centres is buses laying over in inappropriate locations or driving in loops waiting until they're due to start their next scheduled service. In order to provide a single location where buses can lay over and be able to get back onto the timetable, the off-street car park at Old Haymarket was replaced with bus layover facility known as the City Bus Hub. The facility has a capacity for six buses to lay over on street, off-street, and it was proposed to introduce a further six spaces on-street, two on the north-east side and four on the south-west side. In the meeting of this committee on the twenty-eighth of November twenty nineteen, the committee considered the objections against the scheme and elected to approve the proposals in the main, but with question marks over the number of buses which would be expected to use the site, committee's decision was to defer the decision on four bus stands on the south-west side of the carriage way. Mersey Travel have now further developed their bus routing strategy and have provided the bus arrival and departure profile which demonstrates a need for twelve bus stands at the facility rather than the current provision of eight. Whilst testing the off-street facility, difficulty was faced in turning into the site due to the presence of vehicles on the south-east side of the road in what is proposed to be a loading bay to support local businesses and residents. Efforts have been made to amend curb lines on the entry to the bus sub-site to make access easier. Concerns remain that large vehicles parked in the loading bay will prevent buses from turning. In light of this, it is proposed to move the loading bay ten metres north-west, no waiting at any time and no loading from seven AM to ten AM and four PM to seven PM restrictions were proposed for this location previously. Forty-five objections were received during the initial objection period regarding the bus-up scheme. Concerns included noise, vibration, pollution, loss of visual immunity, loss of parking, loss of loading, loss of disabled parking, an increase in traffic, reduction in safety and impact on residents and an impact on the businesses. Since sharing details of the proposed relocation to the loading bay, a further ten objections were received. And then since the agenda for this meeting was shared, a further sixteen objections were received, mainly with regard to the deferred bus stand. Objectors have commented that the noise and fumes on buses using existing bus substands allow the site to show that the site is unsuitable for use as a bus-up. Comments about loss of loading provision, loss of disabled parking provision, emergency service vehicles being impeded, the impact on business and the impact on residents have also been received, as well as questions raised about the ongoing need for additional bus stands given the uncertainty in which Covid virus has caused. With regards to the proposed location of the loading bay, objectors have commented that the new location is alongside an outdoor seating area and having vehicles loading and unloading here will deter customers. You've already covered about the bus, the videos, I've got the summary here of what was submitted. There were several videos of buses idling at different times of the day, including noises from noisy brakes, abusive driver in one case, and these have been shared with Mersey Travel. There is also buses and a show of the view with no buses parked up to show what is saying.
A new piece of your report Oliver?
Oh, sorry.
Hello Oliver?
Yes, what was that councillor?
Have we got any other officer comments on the report?
Not that I'm aware of, unless Fernando was going to comment.
Not on the report itself, we do have Mersey Travel and bus operators here and they will be able to provide more information on the, basically the information about the number of buses that are going to be using the bus hub, but I'm not sure if you want to address that now or maybe just go through the agenda and then if there's an objection, I'm sure that they will be able to provide information in the course.
Thank you. Can I ask councillor Parsons please if you've got any comments or questions for Oliver?
Thanks Sharon. Can I just check because I'm sorry, I didn't find the map very easy to read, it was a bit blurry, I have got a bit clearer now. The loading bay that you're proposing to move, where is it currently on this map?
Right, so the map doesn't show where it is currently, the map shows its proposed location. Effectively, the immediately opposite, the southern, well, the entrance to the bus hub is where it's shown on the plan you have. And underneath that, there's a blue line on the plan. The blue line, the start of the blue line at the southern, southern end of that blue line is where the loading bay was previously due to start and run for fourteen metres. And then the no waiting at any time, the no loading eight hours was to go between the loading bay and the proposed bus stand. So it's been moved up the carriage way by ten metres.
Right, so since the last committee, the loading bay has never been put in place?
I don't believe so.
No, that's fine, it's just that when I went down this morning last week, I couldn't see the road marking, so I just needed a bit of clarity as to where that was. And can I also ask, Oliver, you mentioned that obviously there's an issue with buses turning into the car park space and you said that efforts had been made to address the issue. Can you detail what efforts those are for me please?
The curb line at that corner into, as you turned right from Old Haymarket into the bus hub facility, the curbs have been tweaked, curb line's been changed slightly. Obviously, we don't want to remove any more trees, so there's the effort, you can't do too much in that vicinity without impacting the trees.
Sorry, I was still on mute. So the loading bay currently that you're proposing, what hours will that be?
Loading would be allowed in it at any time of the day, but it would be restricted to loading only between the hours of eight AM and six PM.
But when you look at the map, is that not over the entrance to the car park place? So if buses have got an issue now turning in, will that not exacerbate the issue if there's a loading bay there?
I think based on the bus trials, they've suggested that it's the kind of the back end of the bus I would feel. So with the bus, sorry, the loading bay further up, it's out of the path where the problem would be when they're turning in.
Right, okay, thank you. Thanks Sharon. You're still on mute Sharon?
Thank you. My question is around, obviously since the last committee on the twenty-eighth of November, one of the reassurances that we asked for was the need for the additional four bays. So can you just talk us through what has taken place since the last committee to confirm that that need is required?
Hi, it's Simon Akers from Mersey Travel.
So Simon.
Hi, so what we have done is we've produced the sort of a sample graph of a sample hour which would, we would consider to be an off-peak hour between sort of ten and three in the afternoon. And that graph effectively maps out the arrival and departure times of all the buses that would be using the hub that would be terminating in the Queen's Square area. And what that shows is that it just allows you to see how many buses would be in the hub at the same time. And obviously it varies minute to minute because the different services operate to different frequencies. But if you look on the graph, the total number at the bottom, there are several occasions where there are eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve buses that would all be in the hub at the same time. And our concern would be as if there are not sufficient spaces in the hub, then you end up with then congestion back on Victoria Street or you end up with buses causing obstruction in the highway because there isn't anywhere for them to park, because once they're into Old Haymarket, the only way out is up at the top. So by having the twelve bays, we feel that would be sufficient to accommodate all the buses that need to take their layover in that one central area.
Okay, can I just ask then on the model and the information in the report, so from nine thirty to three thirty, it's anticipated there's ninety buses per hour?
Yeah, they could be up to ninety, based on everything running to time.
So there would be five hundred and forty buses across those six hours that would use the bus hub?
Potential across that span, yeah.
And can I just ask then, in terms of the time that they would be laid in the bus hub, what's that anticipated?
If you mean in terms of each individual vehicle, within the hub again, that would vary route by route because different routes will have a different amount of layover, it isn't, each route isn't given a set time of say, for example, ten minutes to have layover. The amount of layover is determined by the length of its route and I would say that varies route by route. So it would not be an excessive amount of time, drivers would not be taking meal breaks during that time. It is a recovery place and for the drivers to use the facilities that have been provided within that time.
So it would be, the layers of them would be obviously for facility break and also for if the journey is, you know, it's quicker than anticipated, it's an opportunity to layover and until the bus is next due to go out of the microcell?
Yeah, so it's the books are given exact average, but you would probably look and say between four and ten minutes, that would be roughly the average layover time for a service. But there may be instances where it is slightly longer because again, it depends on the route. It might depend if the bus has arrived in the city centre early, so it might be, it might have a couple of extra minutes than scheduled.
Thanks Simon, can I just also ask then, because we previously did approve eight bays, are they in operation?
The full eight are not in operation at the moment, the ones that are currently being used are the, trying to think of the best, the on-street ones on the outside of the hub area. So effectively, there's two marked bays that are in full operation at the moment.
Okay, and then the other question that I would just like some clarity on is a lot of the information in the objections relate to the management of the bus hub, a lot of idling, a lot of noise nuisance, video clip where it shows that, you know, a bus has gone the wrong way. So in terms of the management, we were informed at the last committee that there would be management arrangements on the hub. So has that been happening or is that currently still looking to be implemented? What arrangements would be in place is the question I'm asking.
So at this stage, the hub isn't fully operational, it's just using those two bays at the moment. It will be managed between Mersey Travel and the bus operators and I think probably if the operators themselves could talk about how they will enforce the behaviour of the buses and the drivers, I think that would be useful if they don't mind.
This is Matt from Stagecoach and my colleague Howard from Ariva's on, so I don't know which one of us wants to talk, but I mean, we'll work together on this and I'll go first, but we're committed once the hub opens, the time being to put some supervision in between us and with the plan that that would scale that back once things have settled in. We have a code of conduct for drivers on behaviour supported by a training package and a lot of that's been prepared now. And then we can monitor things like vehicle idling, we can monitor that remotely with the software on the vehicles. And if we need to check up on anything, we've also got vehicle telematics CCTV. So basically, we'll be giving our drivers a set of comprehensive rules and we'll be monitoring staff. There will of course, very occasionally be someone who doesn't follow that initially in a settling period and we're absolutely committed to getting that right. That's why we've heard examples of buses idling just now, we will get this right. And so we're committed to managing it. I don't know, Howard, do you want to add or expand on that? I mean, I've just kept it very simple.
Hi Matt, it's Richard, Richard Orth from Ariva. Howard's also on the call, but I guess I'll pick it up. I think, you know, I echo the words you've said, you know, we as a company, just like Stagecoach and as part of the Alliance, are committed to making the bus hub work. We are, you know, aware of the issues in some cases that it has caused in the area. You know, I personally have been to a number of face-to-face meetings with many people on this call, you know, and that commitment goes through that, you know, there will be issues, there will be errors with drivers and it's our job to make sure we address them and minimise them. You know, just like Stagecoach, we've got technology in place on the vehicles to help minimise and reduce idling. We also have a new training campaign that will be launched post-Covid called Driving Ariva that is all about the driver behaviour and the importance to the environment of how they act within the vehicle and such things like reducing idling, making sure the driving at the lowest possible speed, well within not just the speed limit, but the speeds appropriate so buses aren't revving up coming out of bus stations etc. So you know, that whole package comes into play. That's only been delayed primarily due to Covid. So very much so, we as long, as well as Mersey Travel, are heavily committed to making it work.
I'll just add, we work together on these sort of issues. So for example, a Stagecoach supervisor would support Ariva staff and work with Ariva if there were any issues and vice versa through the bus alliance, that's what we do.
Can I just ask for, in terms of supervision, what, you know, what supervision will be put in place then?
Do you want to go Richard? Between us, we'll have it staffed for the busy car hours. As I said, we don't intend to do that permanently, we will do it until such time as we're satisfied it operates without problem.
And I think building on Matt's point there, that, you know, the other thing that, you know, clearly we'll need to do is carry out spot checks. You know, it's in everyone's interest when the maximum number of vehicles are in that given area, that that's where we try and get the maximum amount of supervision to minimise any possible issues. But clearly it does make sense that, you know, on the extremities, we are conducting spot checks, so if there are problems, you know, at the start or the end of the day, they're being ironed out as well.
Let's give up any follow-up questions?
Yeah, sorry Sharon, I wasn't aware we were doing the Mersey Travel bit now, so I only asked the questions on the initial report. With regards to what's just been said, Matt, you reiterated that it will be until it's settled in and for the time being. Obviously, as a big organisation, you must have plans as to how that staffed and for how long. What are your initial plans in terms of staffing? Are you talking about a month, two months, three months? You must have some idea about what that looks like. And also, it was just to go back to the mapping, the Mersey Travel mapping, because I'm sorry, this may just be me, but that graph that's in the report means absolutely nothing to me, it's a row of red and green lines. Is there any possibility somebody could talk me through what that mapping process was and how you've come to that information please?
Of course, I'm sure we can. I work in buses and it's a little confusing, I can tell you. Basically, I'm just trying to pull it up so I can see it. Each line on there, it's time across the top, so I'm doing this without seeing it at the moment, and each line on there is a bus, so you can see where it stood and for how long. But I'll come back to that in one moment when I've just answered your question with regard to supervision. We have an open mind, so yes, we'd like to staff it for a month and not need to permanently staff it, but until we're satisfied it's operating correctly, we'll continue to staff it. Now, the way we do that is ourselves and Ariva, and Mersey Travel, we're booked together through the bus alliance to make sure there is somebody on site for the majority of the time. We need to decide whether the majority of the time means from six o'clock in the morning or whether eight o'clock in the morning and until what time in the evening. But between us, we would have someone, we'd have a voter, we would have someone on duty. And then what you do, eventually when you cease that, you don't cease immediately, you start moving into several hours a day on a random basis and spot checks as Richard said. I have three people dedicated to managing the city centre and the mobile, so, and that resource is always there. So I will first of all move some of it to the bus hub on a temporary basis and if I need additional resource, then we will put that in. So I mean, that's the answer from Stagecoach, I'm sure even I want to expand. What we probably need to do is just give you a bit more detail on that actual graph, but that's effectively, it's a timetable showing you how long each vehicle should be stood there, but buses can come in three or four minutes early and buses can come in late as well, which is why you can have a vehicle parked up for up to ten minutes sometimes. And in some cases, if they're running late, they might not even come to the hub and park up. So it will vary very much. And all our vehicles, the driver should turn the vehicle off, that will be part of our code. They do actually have engine idling software which shuts the vehicle down after two minutes as well, but we shouldn't need that because the instructions for driver will be to turn it off. Is it, Richard or Howard, is there something you want to add about supervision?
No, I think I support absolutely everything that Matt said and I think, you know, the banner we'd work under is part of what we do with the Alliance. So instead of you seeing the duplicity of a Stagecoach inspector there, a Mersey Travel and an Ariva, it's about using our resource smartly so we cover as much of the span of the day initially as we can and the seven days of the week to make sure, you know, very early on, we nip out any issues. And again, it's just those ongoing spot checks. Can we sit here as operators and promise it will all go a hundred percent smoothly and there'll never be a problem? Of course not, but I guess all we can do and all we are very committed to doing is making sure we act to the issues very quickly and continually try and improve the situation.
Just as an example, if we had a report of a vehicle idling or some other sort of disturbance, I'm sure my colleagues in Ariva would be the same, we absolutely would follow that up right down to the individual driver. The individual driver would be seen by a manager at the depot, the incident reviewed on CCTV and we would discuss it and take whatever appropriate action was needed. We don't just go, oh, with that report, let's file it in the drawer. We follow up every incident and we're particularly committed to making sure this works. I'm sure that's the same for Ariva, because at the end of the day, we're doing the same job. But again, Richard, do you want to add to that or is it the same?
I think you've summed it up well Matt, I think the only thing I'd say is, and unfortunately, as the bus fleet and the bus movements have moved around the city, certainly the thirteen years that I've been in the industry, as they've moved, we've always had bedding in problems. And I guess that's no different from the hub, whether that be initially Man Island or the Conservation Centre etc. And we've worked with the city council, the residents, the businesses and anyone impacted to minimise that. And certainly, you know, there are hiccups, but very quickly we get on top of them and then it, you know, they dissipate and they disappear ultimately.
Richard, when we were at committee in November, we had the same clear message from Mersey Travel around making sure that training was in place for drivers to make sure they understood protocols. And you said earlier that obviously Covid had put a stop to a lot of that training plan, but the last meeting was November and Covid didn't happen until March. What happened in that four-month period when the bus hub should have been open in terms of driver training and making sure that there weren't issues? And also, before we move on to my further question about the graph, my specific question around the mapping of it is that you've said it could be up to ninety buses per hour. How often is it that there are ninety buses per hour that could be in there? What's the actual modelling? Can you give us a bit more clarity around it? Thanks, that's I think my last question.
Brilliant, thanks councillor. I think on the first one around the training, you know, the bus hub has been, I guess, in production for a number of years, a number of months. It's still not being fully utilised, probably the issues that everyone's aware of. Until we get a clear date of when the utilisation starts, we haven't carried out significant training because what we want to make sure is it's at the forefront of the driver's mind. Experience tells us that if we train the drivers on something that's not going to come in till two, three, six months in advance, unfortunately, due to the volume information they have to take in and the frequent changes and things, it dissipates, it loses its impact, I think rightly or wrongly, and open to criticism on it, but we've always taken the view before things happen, that's when we do the training. So once we know the bus hub is up and running and clearly Covid has thrown the world upside down, but, you know, we need to be sure we've got a date, we're going in, we're using it and we train the drivers accordingly and then put the management processes in place. I guess moving on to the bit around the bus graph, I think unfortunately, and Matt's touched on it, bus operations is almost a dark art. We have a set timetable and a set schedule and we would love to be in a world where that timetable and that schedule is absolutely a hundred percent accurate, that's certainly what we planned for. We build the layover in because a bus leaving, let's say St Helens and coming into Liverpool could be hit by a number of disruptions. If those disruptions don't happen, it means that vehicle has six to seven minutes in Liverpool to wait its time. If invariably they do, that could drop down to two or three minutes or actually it could be running late. And I think that's really the difficulty. What you're looking at on the graph is if everything was to run to time, based on the current schedule of the level of buses that are operating, that is what the world would look like. Clearly on a daily basis, that would change and it's really hard to, I suppose, express by a number of examples of what reality would actually look like.
So I'm just looking at the graph now and I'll just tell you a little bit more about it. At the top, for those people who can see it, I mean, I could bring it up if you wanted me to do that. At the top is time, so you've literally got ten o'clock, ten oh one, ten oh two, ten oh three, ten oh four and so on. And each line on there is a bus route and each red line, I've got a bit of feedback, so each red line is when the vehicle is in the hub. So if you look at ten o'clock, you choose a time and you counted each red block, that would be the number of vehicles that would be timetabled to be in the hub. And at the bottom, it summarises that, it says total buses in the hub. So it's the number of buses that would be in the hub minute by minute if everything ran to clockwork perfection in terms of timetables, which doesn't always happen. But so it's effectively a timetable laid out on the graph.
Thanks Matt.
Explain it a bit more?
It does, I mean, unfortunately on the copy that we've got, you can't... I mean, unfortunately on the, the copy that we've got, you can't read either the explanation or the timings at the top. So it is just a grid of red and green lines. So that's why I needed the explanation.
Each, each column running downwards is a minute. If you, if you enlarge it considerably, you will start to be able to see, see the time. And it's, it's only a sample actually, it's from nine fifty four in, in the morning through till 11 o'clock. So it's two hours of time, minute by minute, with each block representing a vehicle parked up.
And is that modelling for a weekday or?
I'm not sure who produced this one, probably Simon at Mersey Travel might know. It looks to me like it would be a weekday, yes.
Yeah, so that.
On a Sunday, there would be less buses and on Saturday there would be a few less. We generally run slightly lower frequencies on Saturdays.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, ju- just to confirm it, it is a, it's a weekday. And I said at the beginning, it's an interpeak hour, so it's between approximately half nine and half three. To, to give that example of that's when it would be at its busiest. Because that's when, that's when we need the capacity.
Any further questions, Liz?
No, I'm fine, thanks Sharon, thank you.
So can I advise committee that we have eight requests for people to address the committee on the proposals? And I will take the speakers in the following order. So can councillor Nick Small please address the committee?
Yeah, thanks Sharon, thanks for, for bringing me in first. I'm actually on holiday at the moment, so I'm not going to stay for the, for the whole of the meeting and everything. I've been working, and one of the central ward councils have been working, supporting residents and businesses. I work with Mersey Travel and the bus operators in the city council, probably for about two or three years on some of these proposals. I want to make three points today around sort of where we are, where we are now in the latest set of proposals. The first one is sort of how we've, how we got here. When we had the, the, the meeting in November, everyone broadly went away reasonably, reasonably happy with sort of the compromise that we got to there, where we had the six bays on the former car park and the two bays on the, on, on the north of Old Haymarket. It seemed a reasonable compromise at the time. My understanding, I think, when I've spoken to businesses and spoken to residents who attended that meeting, my, my, my understanding was that, you know, we, we, we'd see how those bays operated. We'd see how the bus hub operated with that. And then Mersey Travel would come back with, 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 with other proposals based on how it's been, how it's been operating. I don't think we can, we're in a position where, where, where we can, we can approve those sort of new proposals now for two reasons. The, the, the first one is the bus hub hasn't been fully operational. So of the, of the eight bays that have been approved to date, the six on the former car park and the two on the north side of Old Haymarket, only two of them have been operational over the past few weeks and, and, and a month. So we don't know what the full impact on residents and on businesses. We don't know what the full impact on the, the, the bus operators is going to be. Because we haven't had those six spaces open on the former car park. The second point is the bus services in Liverpool, but right across the country, probably globally, bus services are completely up in the air at the moment with, with, with Covid. And there's, there's, there's far, far fewer people using buses, there's fewer people working in the city centre. It means there's probably fewer buses there, there's fewer people on those buses. There's possibly even more buses laying over than, 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 than at normal times because buses are, are, are arriving early because there's less traffic on the road. So the bus services are completely up in the air. So we shouldn't be making any decisions now that are, that are long term decisions based on where we are right now and where projections are right now. With Covid, everything's gone down and we simply don't know where bus services are going to be in six months, in, in a year, in, in, in five years' time. I'm someone who uses buses a fair, a, a, a fair amount. I've used them over the past few weeks since, since lockdown's been, been lifted and I've seen sort of the impact of, of, of some of this. The second point I want to make is how this impacts on, on, on businesses, on Old Haymarket and on Dale Street. We've got a lot of hospitality businesses there. You've got So Coco Rouge, which is a makeup salon. You've got Love Locks, which is an, an, an cafe and a street restaurant. You've got the Travel Lodge Hotel, you've got Carlices and Dead Crafty Beer and, and, and Dale Street. All on Dale Street, all, all, all bars and cafes. All of those businesses, or most of those businesses have embraced the Liverpool Without Walls initiative. They've had to change their operating model quite radically. If you look at a business like, like Love Locks who are here or Dead Crafty Beer, since they've, since they've reopened, hardly anyone inside in those businesses, they're all sitting outside. So the outdoor spaces are much, much more important. The real fear that those businesses have got, and I, I share them, I've visited them quite a lot over the last few weeks to see how they've been going on. The real concern that they've got is they're facing two threats here. They're facing Covid and lockdown and they're facing the issues with the bus hub. If you put buses on the street, it makes it much less attractive. And with the greatest will in the world, we've not seen the full impact of that at the moment. So you've got two spaces there that have been operational at the moment. At times though, you've had three or even four buses in Old Haymarket. You've had three, sort of trying to get into two spaces. You've had buses backing up in, in, in there. We don't know how many people and how many buses are actually going to bother to turn in and use the spaces in, in the former car park. I hope that they do, but it's human nature. If there's a space there that you can just drive into or you've got to manoeuvre into a space, you'll choose the one that's easier to go to. So the fear that I've got and the businesses have, have got is if we put these four spaces on the south side, buses, buses are just going to ignore if the spaces on the, in the former car park and drive into there and lay over there because it's easier to do it. The knock on effect then on businesses is going to make it much less attractive for people to sit outside. The very clear message that's come through from, from all of those businesses, I've spoken to them, every single one of them over the past week, and some of them are here today. Some of them have put objections and representations in. But the very clear message is we could deal with one of Covid or the bus hub. But both of these things happening at the same time could be fatal to those businesses and could fatally undermine those businesses. And actually, if you look at what the council's done through Liverpool Without Walls, it's been a fantastic initiative. It's working really well. There's a fantastic atmosphere on Old Haymarket, on Dale Street. Those businesses seem to be doing really well in the circumstances. So you've got one part of the council being really supportive of Liverpool Without Walls. Another part of the council threatens to, threatens to damage all, all, all of that. So I think we need to look at this collectively as a, as a council. The final point I want to make is around some new things of how this, this, this could be affecting residents. People have seen and have sent the pictures in of, of the incident that happened in, in, in July. A bus has turned the wrong way, has gone down Preston Street instead of going on to, on to Dale Street. It was human error, you know, okay, but one of those balconies was hit. And there was a resident on the balcony when that was, when, 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 when that was hit. We're lucky that wasn't, you know, that, that, that didn't cause further damage. That didn't cause some, some real problems on there. And again, with the greatest, you know, respect and people drivers will make, there'll be human error and there'll be, be issues with that. I know that that issue is dealt with. I got sent another picture from, from yesterday evening, from last night. And it's on social media that someone else has took with a single deck of bus that went down. It didn't hit any of the balconies, it didn't do anything that, that, that went down there. So there's some new issues that have come up. What I'm saying in the representation I've made is that we, we, we should defer doing anything, approving the, the, the four bays on the south side of Old Haymarket until three things happen. First one is all of the lockdown restrictions, all of the restrictions on businesses aren't there. We've got back to normal. Don't have social distancing and businesses can, can operate in a way that they were operating this time last year. Once we've got, you know, when we have social distancing in place, we have to allow businesses to support themselves with outside seating areas. And you can't have the outside seating area operating as effectively with these four bays as, as, as it's operating, as it's operating at the moment. The second thing I'd like to see is a full risk assessment being done into the impact on Westminster Chambers. So Westminster Chambers, the, is, is, is the building and the, the, the backs on with the balconies, it backs on to Preston Street and it's on Crosshall Street. We haven't specifically addressed any of those points around the risk assessment within there. And, and, and the third point is that we shouldn't do anything until we understand how the, 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 the bay, the six bays in the former car park and, and the two bays on Old Haymarket, the existing bays. We shouldn't do anything until we understand how that's working and how that's been working for a considerable amount of time. And how buses across the city centre are going to get back to normal, if they're going to get back to normal around Covid. So I, what, what, what I've said is that, you know, I hope the committee can look at deferring again, making a decision about these four bays until those three conditions have been, have been satisfied. We are in really weird times at the moment. And I think it's up to all of us, the city council, it's up to all of the stakeholders, all of the partners to work together to try to support everybody out there. And I genuinely do think that we had a good, a good compromise before around the, the, the bays on the former car park and the two bays there. Let's have a look at how that works before coming back and doing anything with the buses. And, and let's have a look at how we can support those businesses. Because genuinely, and the businesses are here today and they'll tell you first hand on this, we don't want to see businesses going under because of this decision and Covid going to happen in at the same time.
Thank you, Nick. I'm not, normally we would move on to the next person who's going to represent. But I'm going to give the opportunity to officers to respond. Can I ask if any officers would like to respond to the comments? Matt, you've put your hand up.
I, I'm not an officer though, I'm obviously Stagecoach. Just, just a general comment, I totally understand for everybody the impact of Covid and that we don't want to make too many changes till we get back to normal and let's hope we do soon. For bus operators, normal currently means running 100% of journeys to, to be able to move at the most 45% of people because of social distancing. So we're ha- we're having to do a lot to try and have a normal life and carrying a lot less people. So there's a real challenge in being able to operate the timetables without the additional layover. So there's a slight sort of opposite to, to what you're saying for us as a bus operator. But I do understand the suggestions of effectively to avoid upon parking things up until, until, till things have got back to normal. So just wanted to share with you that we need to run 100% of the operation to be able to move about 45% of, of the customers. And when I say customers, the majority of people are key workers, the people who rely on us for, for shopping, for healthcare, for appointments, for education. You know, we are a lifeline to many people. Thank you.
There, one moment, I think Howard, have you got your hand up?
I have Sharon, yeah, if I may, just, just, just want to confirm. So Howard Farrell, I'm the managing director for Ariva in Liverpool. So, so I do, I do sympathise with what Nick's been saying. But I think it's really important that people understand that at the moment, it, it is the DFT and governments that are telling us to, to, to go back to 100%. So we've been informed as part of the funding that we currently get, we have to go back to at least 98, 99% of services. So if we do that from September, that requirement will be needed in the hub. Otherwise, we will have vehicles everywhere in the city. So I just want to make that point that Matt's right, we're only carrying 45% because of social distancing. If that wasn't there, then I would agree, but unfortunately that is there. And that's why they are telling us to ramp back up to 100%. Thanks Sharon.
Thank you, Howard. Does anyone else want to comment? Fernando?
Yeah, thanks, thanks Sharon. I wanted also, also to, to say about Liverpool without, Liverpool without walls and what we're trying to do. It's not just Liverpool without walls, it's kind of a whole package of, of initiatives that we have there, such as what we're doing on Ball Street and other areas of the city that are laying on. The highways team is also involved there, it's not that we're basically working silently in the council, it just doesn't work like that. It's, it's, it's a combined effort by, by everyone here. And the same word, the same word with Liverpool without walls, we're actually trying to promote active travel as much as possible. And with all the wheel in the wall, active travel won't be able to tackle all the issues that we have with, with transport. And we do need a robust and efficient public transport service. That's why we cannot just put everything on hold until Covid is not there. Because quite frankly, I don't know, we talk about weeks, months or, or how long we talk about here. And we need to do improvements and we need to keep progressing. I think that do, do nothing and have everything on, on, on hold is not an option really.
Thank you Fernando. Can I just ask if you have raised your hand? Can you please take it down after you've spoken? Thanks. So our, the next person who I'm going to invite to address the committee is Sarah Love Lock. Sarah, will you just take yourself off, move to the interview cell please, thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Love Lock. I'm sure you've all seen my face before. It's been going on for three years, so I think people are familiar with me now. So I own Love Lock's coffee shop on Old Haymarket, which is like slap bang in the middle of it all. I've got a few points. My first one is that the buses, because I couldn't read the graph either. So I've just now been informed that it's now 90 buses an hour. Initially, at the initial consultation, it was a maximum of 37 buses per hour. So obviously that's dramatically increased to what we've initially been told. So that's terrifying. It's even more scary now. So I just want to like, talk about the impact of just one bus idling. I know they said that they're going to put marshals there initially, but, and then scale it back. But to give you an idea of say one bus being parked on the south side of the street right next to the outdoor seating, somebody comes for a coffee or a breakfast, a family or something, and that bus is idling just as a one off. Because as you said yourselves, you can't perfect it straight away. That's a whole group that will not come for breakfast because they don't want to sit. They feel uncomfortable sitting inside, which is fair enough because people are still scared of the virus. And they won't sit outside because there's a bus idling and it stinks, it's awful. Like I've already had buses idling outside and that's across the road and it's awful, it just fills the shop. So I would just say, like, having marshals scaled back at all is just, for me, it's not an option at all. The marshals will have to be there all the time as the buses are operating. And that needs to be planned in, like, we need a guarantee from Ariva and Stagecoach and Mersey Travel that that will never be scaled back. Because as they've said themselves, they can't guarantee that it's 100% of the time. I agree with Nick in terms of the compromise. I mean, I don't want the bus hub there at all, it's already like an eyesore and it's terrible in the middle of the cultural quarter, right next to the museum and, and St George's Hall. It's just a real shame. But I'll accept the compromise and, 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 you know, be quiet about it. If, if we could have that compromise of what was originally agreed at the last meeting. It's a shame that that hasn't been put into place, it's really disappointing. I've had a few customers say that since I've had my tables and chairs outside and So Coco Rouge have put a table and chair outside. And we really are trying to bring the city, the street back to life. And a few customers have said, you know, it's really made a difference just us being there. And it's, you know, without walls is just such a great thing to happen to the city out of a bad situation. And like, really I'd have to scale that back because people can't sit outside with loads of buses outside. Again, to the loading bay as well, we've already said in previous meetings that the loading bay isn't adequate for the amount of residents and businesses on Old Haymarket, two for 37 flats and then the, well, some businesses have already left now because of the bus hub. But hopefully they'll come back, that loading bays aren't adequate. So already we've had double parking. So already we've had double parking where people have been parking on the street, but then we've had a delivery for us and then there's been a delivery for the flats. So it's been like already two deliveries in one go and buses have honked their horns at them, told them to move. I got shouted at by a bus driver because I was loading into the shop, but I couldn't move the car because otherwise I'd have to leave everything that I was loading in the street. So I said I'd be two minutes and he shouted at me. Then there's also, oh, sorry, I've got points written down, but, oh yeah, the disabled access. So I've already had customers messaging the shop saying that they can't, they can't come anymore because there's nowhere to drop off. So they'll ring me ahead of time and say, is there a space outside to stop? Which at the moment there isn't because they still haven't implemented the single yellow line that was agreed on on the last meeting. So they just don't come, which is a real shame. Like, I mean, it's discrimination really, like it's cutting off a whole section of the city to disabled people. Since we've proven that the idling software doesn't work as well, because it's not working. So I'd just ask them to maybe look back at that because that's proven that it hasn't worked so far. We've got five months of proof now. Oh yeah, also the loading bay, I get to the shop from 7am and I get deliveries from 7am. So I'd request the loading bay could be from 7am as well. And another note, I've got some facts. My sales since the beginning of construction went down 67.6%. I did some maths, so just to prove like before we were all like speculation of how it would affect the business. Then since, not including lockdown, since the construction has stopped, my sales went down 46.3%. That's just removing the car park alone. So before we were speculating that's how much my, I think I said 40% was my estimation of how my sales would go down. But it's actually gone down 46.3%. I mean, obviously over lockdown it went down 100%, but you know, yeah, that's, I think that's all my points. Sorry, I'm a rambler. I think that's, oh yeah, that's my lot, that's my.
Thank you for your contribution. Can I just invite any officers or members to respond, would you like the opportunity to respond? No, Fernando?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry, I was speaking and it was in mute. I was going to say in terms of the disabled access, I mean, we've gone through this with planning the first hubs and that was shared with the accessibility or I think it's accessibility design officer. And basically we shared that also with highways development control. And if anything, we're improving access for disabled because we're providing a base for disabled kind of access. And in terms of the quantity of the loading base, we cannot forget that we're in the city centre and nowhere else in the city centre, a business or two businesses will have a loading bay per business. The amount of loading base that we're proposing for Old Haymarket is in line with everywhere else in the city centre. All you have to do is go to Victoria Street or Deli Street or elsewhere and you will see the amount of loading base you have per residence and per business is in line and that was checked by highways development control. I mean, I didn't check that because that's not my expertise. We have people checking that and saying, yeah, the loading bay proposal was in line with what we have in the city centre. In terms of kind of the number of buses and what's happening there, Simon has done much more work with bus operators. Now we have much more information on what we think is going to happen there and the number of buses we will have there. So now we have more information there. Once the bus hub becomes fully operational, there will be marshals there. The issue that we have right now is that there's only two buses stops being utilised. So then you still have buses all over the city centre, everywhere else. And the issue is that we cannot just dedicate people to be at that location. So that's why we cannot be on top of issues like identity like that. Once the bus hub becomes fully operational, we will make sure that this gets enforced and we are going to have people there. And that's the commitment that we have also from the operators and mercy travel. So I think that Covid has also impacted us in terms of, we don't have sufficient resources at this moment in time. We are having to deal with a lot of other measures that we have to implement. But as I said before, once the bus hub is operational, because all the buses will be at the same location, it's going to make it easier for us to manage and monitor and ensure that it gets enforced. Thank you.
Thank you Fernando. Can I now ask Mark McHale to represent?
Hello, sorry about that, we're sharing a microphone here, so just bear with me a moment.
You've got your hand up too.
It's Sarah who actually, she wanted to respond to Fernando's point then, if you had a second.
Sorry, I just missed a point.
Normally the officers would respond at the end of each representation, but I'm just given the opportunity just because obviously you all have individual points in terms of the objections that you've raised and I want to make sure they're all captured rather than being summarised at the end. It's not, I'm not going to give you the opportunity to speak now, sorry.
Okay, it was just, okay.
Okay, well I'll go into mine, just bear with me a moment, sorry about this. So I'll try and summarise it as quickly as I can because I know obviously there's a lot of people who want to speak. Just on the issue of the moving of the loading bay, since it was proposed back in March, the entrance has been widened considerably, but there's only been one test to make sure people can get in. We watched the test and buses got in fine. So like an alternative could be that the loading bay could be widened even more. I think one of the officers, Oliver said before, he didn't want to lose any trees, but I don't think there's any evidence that a tree would have to be lost to widen the bay there, so they don't have to move the loading bay really. And to move it and to move outside of our coffee shop would be really bad for our business. And I don't think they've explored the options so they don't have to do that of widening the road a bit further. The loading bay hours, the loading bay in general, like Sarah said there, it's just not adequate. And Fernando mentioned about it being in line with other city centre locations, which may or may not be true. But it's been removed, this is like a new development, access has been removed. And whether that's fair or not, the reality is that there is a problem there. So if we can't load in in the morning, if residents or other businesses want to use it, use that bay, the only option we have is to double park and that's going to cause an obstruction. You know, and that's not us trying to be antagonistic or anything like that, but that's the reality of trying to run a business. So like Fernando says, it's in line with other areas, okay, fine, but this is not other area. It's a bus hub where the access has got to be clear in and out. If the only option we have to keep our business running is to double park for a few minutes and block a bus, that's just what we have to do. We can't load in from 45 or 50 metres away and have a 500 metre round trip when we're loading several items. And we can't expect our suppliers to do that at the moment. So regardless of the right or wrong, the loading bay just doesn't work. If there's nowhere else on that side of that street to stop, it's going to cause a blockage. Like we saw with the emergency vehicle last week, the emergency vehicle had nowhere else to stop. After somebody fell and hurt themselves, the emergency vehicle had to keep on moving out the way for buses, which is not an ideal situation. Now, in the officers' response to this, they suggest that the monitoring on the site can be a solution to this. But it won't be because this happened in the evening when monitoring might not be there because it's in off-peak times. So there's no guarantee, without a space on the street for vehicles to get out of the way of buses, there's going to be a blockage and because the site just is not big enough to handle these buses. There hasn't been like any kind of risk assessment on what can happen. If a vehicle breaks down, an emergency vehicle wants to use it, several fire engines might want to come out. There's the potential for like real damage to happen and potential for people to get hurt. So that's what I'd say on the bus or on the loading bay. A quick point on disabled access, what Fernando said about their plans to actually improve access. I mean, I find it pretty, it's quite offensive really because I'm a carer. My brother's got very complex disability needs and we like to bring him down to the street to our cafe. I suggest that disabled access is improved, it's just not real, it's not realistic. I know this from caring for my brother, where beforehand with a single yellow line, he's got a blue badge, we could stop on the street, we could take him inside the cafe. With these new plans of removing access for blue badge holders and leaving it as just one bay on the street, which is at the moment, it's always full with a blue badge holder who's got every right to park there, but it's always full. So I've included a photo, so there's one disabled space. At the moment, if these plans go through, I wouldn't be able to take my brother down there as a carer for a disabled person. I will not be able to take my brother down there because the access is removed if that bay is full. So Fernando to suggest that it's improved disabled access, apart from it being just unrealistic, it's quite offensive really. Now, one of the main things I want to talk about is the bus numbers. It's incredible that in the officers' response and in the agenda, bus numbers aren't even mentioned. I think the 90 per hour is mentioned. Mersey Travel, I think currently predict about 1,085 buses coming through in and out of the location every day. I think between half nine and four, it's 585, obviously it could be more, that's a projection, it's not a maximum, it's a projection. And it's just stunning that in the agenda where they're meant to be displaying the need for a bus hub, I'm providing more information on the numbers, I just don't understand why that is. The numbers are actually still being figured out. I think I met with councillor Robinson, who's obviously the Chair of Mersey Travel, who go on record as saying he's been one of the best people to kind of listen to us. He's been really helpful and he's always open to engaging with us. But he told me like a week and a half ago that the bus routing isn't finalised and it's going to be autumn at the earliest. So they're still working this out, these plans are subject to change. So I mean, like everybody else on the committee, when I look at this, the plan, the hourly arrivals, departure plan with the red and green lines, I don't know what's going on, it's not clear what is going on. Obviously the people have just talked us through that. But if this was, you know, they should really be providing a full and transparent breakdown of the usage of the bus hub. If this is dependent on the bus numbers being improved, they haven't done it, they haven't included the appropriate detail, I think it's wrong. Talking about Preston Street, obviously we've spoken about the incident to Preston Street where the bus drove into a first floor apartment. And then I think council officers have suggested that a road sign might fix this. It won't be a legal requirement, it won't ban buses from the road, it'll just advise them not to go there. But at the moment, Areva have told local residents that buses have already been told not to go down the Preston Street, but they're doing it every day, it's still happening and that driver education isn't working for whatever reason, I don't know. When it comes to idling, it's a major problem on the streets, happening every day from six in the morning to past 11 at night. We're down there every day, we see it, the residents see it, there's been countless photos and videos supplied, it's happening all the time. Now, the bus companies suggest that they have this idling technology that can stop idling. It's been happening for the past five months on the site, these two bus bays have been getting used for five months and your idling is happening all the time. So if they have this technology and if they have these ways of stopping this from happening, we've yet to see it. Which, I mean, it kind of brings me on to the fact that it seems like every solution from the officers' report and response, every solution to these problems, the answer is the monitoring of the site, the supervision of the site. Yet when the bus companies, Mersey Travel quizzed on it earlier, no one can provide a solid explanation on what the supervision of the site is going to be. And this is something that passed planning in January 2019 and we were asking the same questions then and we're asking the same questions in November and we're asking the same questions now, eight months later. And no one can provide a solid plan, which is going to happen from, I mean, the bus hub is already open, there should be people monitoring it now. When it opens fully, what is the plan? The bus companies have been asked, they can't provide it. Obviously Matt from Stagecoach said he preferred it to last for a month and then it's going to get scaled down. It's not good enough, it's a major bus station really. Liverpool One, Queen Square, they run professionally. This just doesn't look like it's getting the same consideration from Mersey Travel and the council. They haven't shown how nearly 1,100 buses can safely move in and out of the facility. It just doesn't work. And finally, the point I'd just like to raise is that there is a compromise and there is a solution to this. It's not just all about us complaining, you know, we're open to compromise and we're open to solution. And the compromise, as I see it, is obviously there's the eight bus bays that have got approval, Old Haymarket Bus Hub. If there is extra need for four extra bays, a few hundred yards away on Dale Street, there's four bays there outside municipal buildings which have a TRO approved, they're ready to go. Because the bus numbers are unclear, we don't know whether they'd be needed or not. But if they were, if that 12 buses, 12 bus bays were needed, buses can pass through Old Haymarket and reach municipal buildings, those bus bays there. Now, they wouldn't have to add one extra bit of congestion, one extra dead mile because every bus from Old Haymarket passes that, so it doesn't add any extra routes to the journey. It still keeps within the spirit of the connectivity scheme to reduce pollution and reduce congestion. The only negative response in the officers' response was that they want to keep buses off Dale Street, that's it. They don't say it won't work, they don't say it's not a possibility that should be looked into. But I strongly believe as a compromise, this TRO should get rejected. And until we see that Mersey Travel and the bus operators can use the bus hub effectively and responsibly, which they haven't so far since March, but if they can prove they can do it and there is a need for it, maybe a year or so late in the future, they can look at, if there really, really is a need, they can do it in Old Haymarket and apply for a new TRO when they have that information. At the moment, they don't have that information, so they should be using Dale Street, which is only a few hundred yards away, which can be monitored, if there's a clear line of sight, it could be, both sites can be monitored easily. And the council should be pushing for Dale Street bus bays to be used in the interim while we see how the bus hub works. That way, also get what they want and the residents at least get a compromise and we at least stand a chance of our business surviving. I think that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Howard, thank you for your contribution. Can I just ask any members or would Matt, Richard and Howard like to comment? Richard?
Thank you Sharon. I guess it's more just on the last bit that Mark's raised about looking at Dale Street as an option and how it fits in with the city centre rerouting strategy. I guess, you know, we've all looked at this for, it feels like a very long time now and I know certainly for the residents of the area, it will feel even worse. I think when we've looked at Dale Street, the difficulty is there is one bus stop before you do the left-hand turn. So ultimately Dale Street just does not give the capacity to provide a viable solution. Because in the city centre connectivity plans, those buses were never meant to circle down as far as St John's Street and then come back up Victoria. And obviously with the changes to Castle Street etcetera, with Castle Street now being closed for certain periods of the day, congestion down St John's, like road coming back up and then onto Lord Street becomes even more of an issue. And I guess as operators, all I want to do is give that assurance that we have with our partners, whether it be the City Council or Mersey Travel, tried to explore every possible opportunity to alleviate any problem for the bus hub. And if we could have rerouted the buses in a different way or not needed the additional four layover bays that Old Haymarket offer, we would have done that. And when we talk about the volumes that will be going through the bus hub and we're not clear exactly on what that volume will be, we know what the volume's going to be in September, that's what we've registered. That goes live on the 30th of August, which puts us back to 100% of service that Howard articulated earlier. And with that, the work that Mersey Travel have done to demonstrate in it in a specific time period shows the volume of vehicles that will have to lay over in Old Haymarket. And I'm unsure of a different way or a more helpful way we'd be able to articulate that to our members. And I guess, you know, from our point of view, when we talk about the enforcement and the issues, I made the comment earlier, from our point of view, the bus hub is not operational at the minute. Quite rightly, we're being judged on what's happened in the past. And, you know, if I was a resident living in the area, I could, you know, I would probably feel the same. All I would ask that people do is judge us on the future actions that ourselves, Stagecoach and Mersey Travel do in regards to trying to manage that hub and that situation.
Thank you, Howard. Oliver, would you like to put your hand up? Thank you, Howard. Oliver, would you like to put your hand up?
Yeah, I'd just like to raise, respond to the points on a few of the points. In regards to the loading bay, we requested by residents that they wanted somewhere to be able to park overnight with the loss in the car park. So the loading bay was put in eight till six, which is in line with others in the city centre. The majority of others in the city centre operate eight till six. And if it is something that causes a problem for businesses, it's something that we will address and look at. We will, we can either make it twenty-four hours a day or we can change it to seven to seven or however it fits best if there is an issue that comes up. Something that we will do. And with regard to disabled access, the, while the bus bays were proposed, you wouldn't be allowed to drop off in them. The WL lines proposed which will allow drop off of any passenger. So you could drop off, assist your passenger in and then go and park in a disabled bay. There are two more on Dale Street, which we've created, and has been to the CAF Group, the Co-Product Forum, the Inclusion Office of the City, satisfied that it's improving common facilities. And with regards to Preston Street, yes, there's been collision. It's something that's been reported back through the bus companies, to the drivers, to give an education not to use the route. And we are going to try a sign to say not suitable for buses either side of Preston Street at the top end. The discourage rides from going down there. If that doesn't work again, we will look at more stringent measures to see whether we could put something with a T R O that bans it, if that's needed. But in first measures, we put a sign that says unsuitable for bus use.
Thank you, Oliver. And I've got your hand, sorry, raised. Is it Simon? Have you got your hand raised?
I have, yes. Thanks. It was just to comment on the, on the bus numbers and the graph. And I can appreciate that the format that you might be viewing that in, whether it be a printed, you know, printed on A four piece of paper or even viewing on a electronic on a screen. If you can't zoom into it, it is hard to see. But as has been commented on, that is the best way to illustrate or to show how many buses would be in an hour. To factor it up and to say this is the number of projected buses in the day, isn't necessarily representative of how busy the hub could be. Because between, if the first buses start using it at six o'clock, there's less buses in that hour than there is between seven and eight. So if you give a total buses, number of buses per day, that that wouldn't demonstrate that why you, how many bays you would need. So that's why the graph, as difficult and I appreciate as it might be able to see, that is the easiest way to be able to demonstrate that's where the twelve, why the twelve bays are needed.
Thank you. Richard?
Apologies, my hand wouldn't come down. Apologies.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And I'll move on to Dr Bird. If you can unmute your mic, please, and just.
Hello, councillors and officers. Hi. Thanks very much for giving us the opportunity to present our views here. Yes, so my name's Dr Kai Bird. I'm a resident of the Abbey Buildings. My balcony, front room and bedroom windows overlook directly onto the new bus hub. So I feel like it's, I feel like it's important for me to oppose the planned expansion onto the south side of the road with the additional four bays. I'll preface my comments by saying I applaud the council's efforts to increase the efficiency of public transport in the city and eliminating the blight of idling old diesel buses on our streets is a great ambition of the connectivity stream scheme. However, I do have concerns that any positives you're gaining by removing other buses from around the other city streets are immediately offset by concentrating the entire city centre's worth of idle buses in a single location, which has previously never experienced that volume of traffic or concentration before. So I think you're just pushing the problem around here. I have three main points that have been echoed already by residents and businesses, but I must reinforce them from my own point of view. Firstly, the issue of increased noise pollution. In the initial planning meetings, concerns were raised over noise pollution with bus operators stating that they were putting systems in place to reduce bus idling fuel consumption, and they confirmed that inspectors would be on site periodically to enforce a no-idling policy. Now, thanks to those members from those organisations who have talked about the measures that are going to come in place when that bus hub becomes operational. You're saying that it's not operational now, and I'm telling you that these buses are coming every single hour. We're all working from home. We're all here. We're all seeing this. It is operational right now because the buses are there. De facto, it is operational. Thank you. Please acknowledge that. So this causes, this is causing significant annoyance. It's disrupting team meetings during stressful COVID times when we're all trying to keep our businesses running. It's waking us up at the middle of the night, which is a significant issue because you're talking about having enforcement there at core hours, but who's going to be there at eleven o'clock at night? I've submitted video evidence of buses idling for up to half an hour at a time, past eleven o'clock at night, and it's bang out of order, I'm afraid. Bang out of order and it needs to be stopped. So I truly pity shift workers that are living here as the daytime is their only sanctuary due to the loud music and the shouting that we get from parties on the street. And that vital peace and quiet that we used to enjoy here has now been compromised. If you've ever been kept awake by a rumbling engine or a power tool and you're lying there in bed wondering whether to get up, get dressed and complain, but you worry that it'll stop by the time you get up, you'll know how badly disruptive this is to your, to your vital sleep and your mental health. The authorities so far have abjectly failed to impose the no-idling policy and bringing a further four buses directly opposite our homes is an egregious assault on our quality of life. Having access to fresh air, light and greenery is absolutely vital to physical and mental wellbeing. And while the bus hub already damages these qualities, the extra buses will all but destroy the ability to have our windows and balconies open at leisure and we'll feel trapped in our own homes. Given how many of us, there's a WhatsApp group of residents that are a close-knit community here. Given how many of us are actually first-time homeowners that have broken our backs saving up for deposits to buy these properties over the last few years, this feels incredibly sour now. Many of us moved into these city centre apartments specifically to avoid using public transport so that we could start businesses here and grow the local economy and grow the community. And we're now being followed around by the very thing that we were trying to avoid. I have a great deal of video evidence representing only a small sample of this bus idling activity. And I would just like, just like to quickly play an example of this. It's just on my phone here, so you should be able to hear. And this is what we're losing. This is the ambient noise. This is the ambient noise. So you can hear the traffic and we're all used to that. You can hear the birds chirping away. You can hear the wind rustling in the trees. But now, every single day on the hour, like clockwork, we are instead faced with this kind of noise directly outside our windows. I'm sorry, it's absolutely bang out of order. This is not what we agreed for, agreed to in the compromise. This street is clearly not acoustically suitable for twelve buses at a time. Who is going to police this at night when it is most important so we can actually sleep and carry out productive work? My second point on this is to do with air quality and air pollution. So the DEFRA two thousand and sixteen report on trends in air quality in the UK stated that an estimated twenty-nine thousand additional deaths are caused by prolonged exposure to nitrous oxide particulate pollution in the UK. You are concentrating an additional thousand bus movements per day into a very narrow, narrow funnel. And this will clearly breach the legal limit of forty micrograms per metre cubed, as is the case on Dale and Lime Street, where the DEFRA Air Quality Compliance Report already showed that eighty-four per cent of the pollution on Dale Street was due to buses, and that's with only several bus stations. As Mark and Sarah previously alluded to before, you're now putting twelve on a single street. It's not good enough. Given the risk of additional particulate pollution, this extension introduces so close to our homes. I am taking this as a direct assault on our physical health. I pity those with asthma, COPD or recovering from COVID nineteen who are going to be at additional risk from this particulate pollution. It is actually the concentration of particles that causes the additional mortality. You're talking an extra five per cent per year in every age group, and this has been proven. That's why the legal limit is expressed as particles per metre cubed. As an environmental scientist, I'm passionate about improving our environment. My business here in Liverpool is dedicated to producing low-carbon products and contributing to the green and blue economies. We need more innovative solutions here, not just pushing the problem around. I humbly beg the committee not to grant this extension, if nothing else, on the grounds of public health. In addition, air quality data needs to be collected here before the bus hub fully opens. Then we will have a representative before and after example to determine the effect of any additional buses. I note with trepidation the failure to maintain the diffusion tube air quality sensor on Old Haymarket. Once the DEFRA funding ran out, there was no additional funding. These things are, these things cost pennies. They're a hundred quid a go. Put one in so you can at least prove your air quality management claims that it wasn't going to produce a significant increase in particulate pollution, please. Will the committee consider placing legal restrictions on the operators to keep particulate pollution below dangerous level and within legal levels and work with us to monitor pollution levels here in good faith? And also, I must say, as a scientist, your graph that you submitted as evidence was absolutely disgraceful. This is Statistics one oh one. You didn't represent a distribution over the week. You didn't have any error bars on. You didn't have any key. The text was too, the text was too small on the axes. You need to up your game if this is, because this is significantly influencing our lives for potentially decades to come. So thirdly, I must express dismay at the overall degradation of the built environment here and the friction that this is introducing into our quiet community. Businesses on Old Haymarket, Dale Street and Victoria Street have suffered greatly during the botched construction of this scheme that's overrun dramatically. Months of construction noises, blocked pathways, dust and difficulty offloading all impacted sales and livelihoods of SME owners and workers. These businesses began to recover and then were hit by COVID, further putting them on the back foot by effectively closing off the roads and new businesses and removing parking, squeezing offloading further and making the area a dramatically more unpleasant place to be in. You will be effectively delivering the coup de grace to struggling local businesses. With this loss of businesses over the last year or so, has come a dramatic increase in homeless people seeking shelter in disused doorways, drugs being dealt openly and used in the recesses along Old Haymarket and Preston Street, and more fights and shouting on the street now that there aren't people out having a good time in the evenings. There's even been examples of human defecation in the, in the doorways on Old Haymarket now. If there's people there using businesses, this doesn't happen. A loss of parking on the street is another significant issue that's already been touched on. Residents already have great difficulty parking their cars outside due to the loss of the car park. Removing all further car parking except a few token disabled bays and misplacing the loading bay further will increase difficulties in securing a parking space. Telling us to effectively suck it up and use the multi-stories is easier said than done. How do we take bulky deliveries and groceries, especially impacting our disableds and immunosuppressed residents who have to take grocery deliveries at home? Will the committee consider rapidly implementing some kind of discounted secured alternative parking scheme for residents and businesses and ensure that loading services and emergency services are always able to access residents? Because this is ultimately part of what we pay our council tax for. I'm also concerned about our right to recourse where our authorities fail to adhere to their own guidance on bus idling and driver behaviour. There have already been reports of verbal abuse from drivers when asked to turn their engines off. In one edition, one driver went blocked by two other buses and a local delivery driver became extremely agitated, and Sarah's already covered this once before. He dismounted and began shouting at the local, local business owner. This went on for many, many minutes and as it was escalating, I decided to film him because it had already disrupted my work. He said, look, this is a bus stop. It says right here, the problem is gobshites like you. What a dickhead. And I have video evidence of this and I've submitted it as evidence and I will provide this on record.
Sorry, can I just interject? We just, obviously, we've seen some any bad language. We are live streaming to the public.
Apologies for that. I was, it was clearly a quotation.
Yeah. And I also, we've got four of the speakers.
Yeah, I'm nearly there. I've got two seconds left. Thank you very much. Anyway, I submitted that as evidence and I was disgusted and livid at this. I was a special constable with Mersey Police for several years and I've never spoken to a member of the public like this. It was an absolute disgrace. It took a lot of integrity on the part of the business owners to stand up to that guy shouting in her face. And any, and a further, like, as has been mentioned, the further reduction in space available will cause more problems like this. This scheme is in direct contravention of not only DEFRA and EU reports, EU laws and scientific advice about particulate pollution is also strongly against the UN Sustainable Development Goal, number eleven, to make human cities inclusive, safe, resilient and sustainable. In closing, I beg you not to grant this extension because Liverpool should be a city that prioritises its people, not buses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fernando, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Sharon. So as you respond to kind of the, the two main themes that I think that haven't been discussed before, which is about the noise and the air quality. In terms of the, of their quality, I mean, unfortunately, we don't have the, the public health officers here, but we discuss at length about their quality and what this means, what the bus hub means in terms of air quality and the connectivity schemes during planning. And at that meeting, we, we have our experts there. I have to say that the connectivity phase one scheme, the business case has been developed by, by ME Consulting and they have their air quality experts. And in addition, it was reviewed thoroughly by, by the founders. I think that case was AECOM. And again, they review this and they review their quality, kind of information that was being provided and was accepted. The report says that the whole connectivity phase one and the bus hub will reduce by two thousand tonnes of CO2 emissions per year and improve bus efficiency by nine hundred thousand kilometres a year. Those figures are not made up. Those figures came from the traffic model that they pulled together. And again, that was checked by two different, different consultancies. During the planning process, we also did an air quality assessment for, for the bus hub really. And, and that was discussed by, by experts at that time. And it was basically said that, yeah, it was going to be an impact on the, on the area. We are not hiding from that. Obviously, if we put more buses there, obviously, there's going to be impact in the area. But the report said that that will be within the threshold that we have, that are allowed. So I'm not an air quality expert by all means, but this has been reviewed in detail by air quality experts during the business case stage, during the review of the business case stage and at planning. And all the reports are available in the, in the website. If you go through the planning portal, everything is, is there. In terms of the noise, I actually refer back to, to planning because we discussed about that. And to be honest, I don't remember exactly the, the regulation or the standard, but there's some sort of, of process where you could apply to get some improvements done to the, to the noise quality of, of your billing. And basically, I think there's, there's an option to get noise insulation installed if, if noise have gone worse because of, of a new development. As I said, I'm, I'm not an expert in that, that case, but if you want, I think I have your email because you, you've sent me emails. So while if you want, I'll dig that out for you and send you the reference to the, the standards and then the assessment. That, that's no issue. So I'll do that after this meeting, if that's okay. Thank you.
Can I ask Claire Patterson?
Hi, everybody. I'm Claire Patterson. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, so I live in Westminster Chambers. I'm actually on the ground floor at the back of Westminster Chambers. So my apartment looks out onto Preston Street. I'm the second window down, so at the top end of the road. I bought this place precisely because it was incredibly quiet and on a back street. Despite being in the city centre, it was really, really quiet. And since the bus hub opened, it has been an absolute nightmare and that's not an exaggeration. I live right under the apartment of the balcony that was hit by the bus. Now, Nick mentioned this earlier and he kind of made it sound like it was a one-off incident that was driver error. It absolutely was not a one-off incident. Buses have been coming down this road every single day, a couple of times an hour. Now, because I'm on the ground floor, the buses swing, sorry, I'm looking at the window as I'm talking to you because I can see it right there. The buses swing around the corner and when there's cars parked on the road, their wing mirrors actually scrape my living room window. That's how close they get to me. Because it's a tiny, narrow street and the pavement is really narrow as well. Now, and then when there's no cars parked, they just fly down there. Now, the bus hitting the balcony, like, that was a really bad incident a couple of weeks ago. But I've observed that happened three times from double deckers and I've provided evidence of, of two times. So it's not just once, like a one-off incident. It's actually happened at least three times with double deckers and single deckers go down there all the time. Quite often, they try to reverse backwards, which again, it's a danger. They get members of the public to help them. I've, I've had people literally outside my apartment and the drivers have been getting off the bus and asking members of the public to help guide them because they're stuck between the building and parked cars. So it's just like really, really dangerous for cars, for pedestrians and, and for me living in my apartment now. And I went, like, as, as the guy, as I mentioned before, you know, we're all working from home, so I'm sitting watching it constantly every single day. Now, after that incident happened, I did complain to Arriva and I did send the video and I spoke to Sheldon, the depot manager, last Friday, and he assured me that the buses weren't going to come down there anymore. Now, I can say that it's reduced a lot. It has reduced a lot, but I've still seen at least one a day coming down. So, you know, it's still a big accident waiting to happen. And like Mark mentioned before, what, what will And like Mark mentioned before, what, what will a sign do? And I think my concern is that, like, if there isn't that many buses now and there's going to be 90 coming down when there's like maybe a queue of buses. I, I don't think it's driver error, I just think maybe they, they can't be bothered waiting at the lights to come out and go down Dale Street and take the left turn and come all the way around. And it's a quick, quick way to get onto Victoria Street. So if there's 90 buses an hour, surely they're just going to start coming down again and take that quick, easy route to come down. And so although it has reduced, it's still happening. Now, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that like from where I sit in my living room, I, I can see the buses going past constantly, like it's constant. So for me, the thought of this happening 90 times an hour is just totally intolerable. And I know other people have mentioned that, you know, it's a compromise and they can park on Dale Street or whatever. For me, I am going to have to sit and watch 90 buses going past my living room window. You know, this, I, I feel like I'm living literally in the middle of the bus depot and, you know, it, it was, it was previously a really quiet, you know, really quiet area. And so, yeah, it's been, it's actually been scary having buses, like I feel like the bus is going to come in my living room when, like literally drive into my living room. And it's been scary, it's been stressful, it's incredibly dangerous. I'm concerned about the noise, I'm also concerned about the pollution and yeah, that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Was any of us, any of that, like, um, like, um, from now?
I'm sorry, you, you broke up a bit then, it's Matt at Stagecoach. And, and I'm, I'm not really speaking for Areva, but they'll probably agree with me. And we will absolutely make sure, and we have to manage this. And we will make sure that our buses don't go down Preston Street. There'll be clear instructions, clear monitoring, and if somebody doesn't follow that, we take pretty robust action against them. Yeah, and just on the staffing, you, you want staffing now, we said we, we will provide that. And when I talked about a month, right, she said, as long as it takes. And it's, it's hard not being in a normal meeting, of course, where you can confer with your colleagues. But myself and colleague at Areva have messaged each other a couple of times and, you know, we're committed. I think we, we suggested we, we can do three to six months to start with and then we'll see where we are. But we, we are committed to making this work with, with staff to manage and monitor. I don't know if Areva want to add anything to, to that, Howard or Richard?
I guess to just emphasise, Matt, yeah, you know, we'll commit to keeping presence there as long as it takes to make sure there's no issue.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's a commitment Stagecoach and Areva both make. As Matt says, it's very hard and it's very impersonal to have conversations while you're sitting on teams, you know. But we want to make it work, so we cause as minimal disruption as possible. It's clear a bus hub where you bought flats, residents in the city centre, when you bought them, there wasn't a bus hub there. You know, and for us, it's about how we can mitigate that and manage it as best we possibly can.
And just in terms of the volume of buses, I completely agree and, you know, can only apologise, we haven't seen that document, they've been prepared the way it was. But it, it's not helpful to explain the situation to you. And there won't be 90 buses an hour in the evening, for example. I mean, typically bus operations run about 25, 30% of the level in the evening. So straight away, the volume's reduced. Vehicles have much less time between trips because we can maintain time tubs. And there will be other things we can do to explore maybe whether we could use different terminuses in the evening for, for vehicles, for example. So we can take that away and look at that. The biggest problem is the daytime operation and having somewhere for vehicles to await time in the city centre. But, but that's the whole issue here.
Can I now invite Robin Bird to address the committee? Is Robin on? No? Okay. Michelle Norm, Normanly? Michelle?
Hi, my name's Michelle Normanley. I'm following some very eloquent speakers and, I mean, essentially we're all making the same points. I don't want to labour them, but ultimately this decision has already been made for the bus hub to go there. I was at that original planning committee and I spoke my objections about that at the time. It's in there, it's not, or it may be operational, but we already know the impact on residents. And we've heard exactly what it's like to live there and to try and, and run a business there. It's not pleasant, what used to be a place where you would want to go and spend time is now a place you want to get out of as soon as possible. And I've not had to experience moving in and out of, of, of the flats there. So my family have been in that area, in that flat, since it was refurbished. We're in Sheffield Buildings. Regeneration originally was focused on getting people to move into the city. So it was all about moving in, making the, the city a place of life and vibrancy. And effectively, it's escalated since the, the works have gone in. But that part of the town has been hollowed out, we've already lost businesses. It's already a place where people will actively avoid passing through because it's so unpleasant. It's all about the cars, it's all about the buses. It was always, always about the cars, but now it's all about the buses. And this really does feel like going through the motion. And I have to say that the previous planning meeting was two. But for the two cabinet members that are here, I, I, I hope you pick up on just how concerning it is from a regeneration perspective, for officers to allow a report like that, which is supposed to be for the public to read, digest and understand, for them to allow a report like that to go out as public papers is quite shameful. I work in regeneration and there, there is no way that I would have allowed the type of information about that, the bus flow to have gone out in the way that it is. It's just insulting. And on the other side, on the community side, everything about this is about ignoring what the people who are living and trying to make a, to make a living and to also to, to live, to ignore what they say. It feels like we've talked about the original decision, it was to defer these four bays until it was proven. The bus isn't even, the, the hub isn't even fully operational. So those six bays inside are, are not yet up and running. To just tell us that it's actually far more important citywide for the buses to be able to go there. So you're just going to have to suck it up, plus all the pollution that comes with it, is, is, is essentially saying that the community that live there are not important to Liverpool Council. So there's, there's two, there's, there's, there's that. I mean, the consultation, I have to say, and I did raise it before at the meeting in November. If you read that public report again, the ones that have gone out with this paper, you know, well done for the 10 minutes spent copying and pasting from the previous report. Both of them reference the, the extensive consultation that was done. There were no letters to the flats that we live in at all, apart from, from Graeme's to tell us the work was happening earlier, earlier on in the year and the, at late last, last year. That's no letters at all. I find out my information from social media, from neighbours, from the local businesses and from my local board councillors. And I have to thank everyone for that because the consultation is not happening. And that to me tells, is a clear message that the community is not important. So, uh, at the beginning of the meter, meeting Oliver talked through your active travel strategy and your strategic transport objectives. And, you know, as Dr Bird said, of course, we all, we all want to rely more on public transport. But we also want to be able to walk around our city and that, that's a key route which is already designated as a bus route and is already unpleasant. If you instate those, if you bring those four bays onto the south side of that road, who is going to want to walk through there? I mean, you've got that flow of buses coming through anyway, but even if you manage to navigate that crossing, that key route from St John's Gardens through to Dale Street, that's, that's gone. I wouldn't want to pass through it, but I have to. The other points that have been raised about the impact of the, the current lower level of buses that are there and, and the monitoring. I mean, I would have to ask, what type of commitment would be asked of the bus companies? Mersey Travel and the operators to, to honour these, these monitoring commitments that you're making? Because we all know that we're heading into extremely uncertain times. So what happens when your resources are cut? What happens when actually you change contract and it's a new contractor? Is that operator also going to be obliged to monitor in the same way? And is there also a guarantee to maintain this training beyond the first tranche of drivers that, that are using this bus hub? Or is it assumed that it will be an organic experience that they will pick up? You know, every time a bus driver starts, do they have to go down Preston Street before they're told not to do that? Because that, that's going to be a lot of buses. It does feel like I'm wasting my time like I did back in November. But we have these forums to be able to, to state our case. This is, this is happening, the bus hub is, is there, we know that. But the proposed changes are going to further impact the community that's already there. And it would be nice to feel like, even in this meeting, that our objections have some kind of ground and are being heard, because all I've heard so far from responses is the experts say, our reports show, well, that's great. But those people who write those reports and who are presenting them and that are telling us what the expert tell us, are telling, are, are, are saying about this, they don't live there. They're not, they're not experiencing it, they're not, they're not stuck. They're not, you know, be buildings not going to be able to open their windows through the summer because it will be so, so polluted and so noisy. So a little bit more of the human and less of the expert opinion would be quite nice. And I think that's all, as I've said, there's been some excellent points made. It does feel like it's a, it's a fait accompli and that it's going to happen anyway. But I would urge both cabinet members to, to consider how rigorous this process has been. Is it right to push ahead without actually honouring the terms of the original decision back in November? For this to be evidenced and to be evidenced as, as necessary and with no other solution? Because it does feel like this was always going to happen. There was a concession made to get things through in November and now here we are just getting what, what the engineers and operators and Mersey Travel wanted all along. Thank you.
Contribution, Michelle, can I, I mean, I'm going to actually comment on something that you've said really around your community and particularly not matter, mattering to the council. Your community does matter to the council and your contribution and everyone's time who have turned up for tonight's meeting is valued and it's appreciated because the whole point in holding this committee is that obviously we have a proposal put forward from officers and, you know, Mersey Travel and you brought the bus hub. But the whole point in this meeting and having this committee is to hear both views. So, and you have a right to object, so I just want to make that very clear, if that's okay. Fernando, happy to bring you in.
Thanks, Sharon. I mean, I have no doubt whatsoever that the promises made today by Matt and Richard will be honoured in terms of, of monitoring and that they will have presence on site to make sure that the same issues don't happen again. But in terms of what will happen in, say, a worst case scenario, from a council's perspective, this has been built into a lease agreement with Mersey Travel. And that lease actually specified that there's going to be no idling and all these kind of interventions that we're talking about here. That lease will have to be enforceable and will have to be in place before they start using the, the, the kind of the, the bus stops within the bus hub itself. So that has been written into a legal agreement in terms of what will be the worst case scenario. But as I said, I don't think that that will have, have to be used at all because I'm sure that the promise made by, by Matt and, and Richard will be honoured on, on site. In terms of consultation, Oliver Brown is, is here and he, he knows much more about the consultation we, we've done. So if, if I could ask Oliver to, to explain what consultation we have done both before the previous hubs meeting and now for this, this committee meeting?
Um, yeah, sorry. In terms of consultation, we got original reports that the first consultations that were sent out weren't being received by residents. So after that, we took it into our own hands and my colleagues went and handed delivered the letters. We didn't use an external company, which we've done in the past. And, and my colleagues assured me that we've been delivering letters to the properties on Old Haymarket and Preston Street when, when we've, when we've sent them out. So it is concerning to hear that people haven't been getting them still. I don't know what more we could do really if, if we're not getting them through. And I'd be interested to know how, how you get them, the communications from councillors and how they get through whereas our letters don't. It is concerning to hear. And the letters from Graeme's, they've come through and there again, Graeme's are instructed to send those letters by the council. So that is part of the consultation process, but a few of the parts I haven't got through, which isn't.
Matt, would you like to come in? You're very so happy.
So I'll, I'll make a point and if, if my bus operator colleagues at Areva agree, hopefully that they'll say the same. We're very happy to make a firm commitment, or I am in partnership with them, if they're happy that straight away from when it opens, we'll put 12 hours a day of supervision in until, until such time as we think we can manage the operation. And we can move that round, if it needs to be some in the evening, we'll look at that. But I don't know how colleagues at, at Areva feel about that, but we're happy to give a firm commitment to get things off the ground. The other thing I wanted to just cover, we talked about training, we do have quite comprehensive training packages. There is, I've seen what Areva put together for when the bus hub opens. It's quite a comprehensive training package, it's a video for drivers. And that, that, we do those things all the time, so it's not just we'll train everybody now. When we introduce a new process, and it's the same, I believe, for Areva, it's worked at Areva. And every driver goes through that training package. We operate in many places, Liverpool One, Queen Square, we have codes of conduct our staff have to follow. So we can't just train them once and then say we've done it, we have to put all new staff through there. We have annual training programmes with refreshers, so it's always an ongoing process in terms of training. It's not a one-off and then it's done. So we're happy to give firm commitment on supervision in terms of some hours of the day and for a period of time. And the one thing we're not wanting to do at the moment is to commit to permanently staff forever the site. It is just bus parking and we have to manage our staff and get our staff to observe the rules. And we, and I'm sorry to hear there's been some incidents so far not doing, we are committed to getting that right. And we will supervise until such time as we can and do. Is there anything, Howard or Richard, you'd like to add to that or?
I guess I support what you're saying, Matt, clearly, you know, we'll share that commitment, that we'll cover the span of the day and supervise it. I think in regards to the training material, you know, as Matt alluded to, we do share training material via the alliance between operators to make sure the drivers are trained to a high standard and we reinforce that with all new starters that join the business. I, I think, you know, someone had thought of while Matt was talking then was around, we do official training, I suppose it's called with Mersey Travel on their bus stations. And that's part of the compliance that we as operators have to live up to, to ensure that we can safely navigate those bus stations. If a driver hasn't gone through that training, they're not allowed to use that specific bus station. I guess that's something Matt and ourselves, along with Mersey Travel, should probably take away and take up with Mersey Travel, whether the hub could be included in that? To ensure that once someone's trained, not only trained on Liverpool One bus station in Queen Square, but they're officially trained also to a set standard agreed with Mersey Travel, that they can use the bus hub as well.
And last, not least, Ronnie Ford, if Ronnie would like to address the committee?
Okay, hi, I'm Ronnie Ford. I work, live and I'm a resident of Old Haymarket for 21 years. And my apartment overlooks the, the bus hub. I have to say that my fellow residents and other commercial operators that have in the retail areas below have given a very eloquent representation of the issues that exist here. And as you can hear, councillors. Um, and as you can hear councillors, um, these are, are all being passionate and heartfelt. Um, they're not damn lies, lies and statistics, um, and they're not being read off verbatim, of a verbatim report. Um, the, this issue is, um, affecting people's lives very, very deeply. And people who, um, have effectively offered an olive, an olive branch to living in this city and making this city as diverse as it possibly can be, with people residing in it and not just businesses predominating it. Um, my other, um, on the same lines of that is that I can honestly say, being here 21 years, is that, um, this present council, um, during this present council's, um, tenure, I have seen my quality of life being almost reduced by half. I can tell you for, for a fact that most of the time, if not all of the time, anything that's gone on in this city has basically been led by the nose against those that reside in the city. That is de facto. This is yet another example of that, um, which is quite clear, um, to everybody who's been at this meeting. Um, and as actually should be, um, what is a, 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 a representation of something that the council should be ashamed of. This is another example of this council and this mayor browbeating people into, um, a decision using, um, operators and using business to actually do that as a tool to make, um, things happen the way that they want to. Um, equally, um, as an architect, as the architect of the building, um, it's interesting that we can see planners now, um, as opposed to in 2001, who we negotiated with, um, really, really carefully at the time about the ethics of what planners are, are all about and about what planning is important from a human side and from a civic side, not just about business and traffic routes and volumes of traffic. Those things are about streetscape, about civitas, about how people reside in cities, about public spaces, that this council has just got no conception of whatsoever.
Can I interject, please, can you stick to the proposal, please?
Well, the council is.
Please instead of.
Well, exactly. I think the thing is, is that, that, that is an extension of the problem. The, the council's attitude.
Obviously, we're here to discuss what's being proposed at committee. So can you please stick to those points? Thank you.
I disagree with that, but I will take it on board. That's fundamental flaw in this, um, process. Um, and hopefully that gets recorded. Um, 2001, where we discussed with, uh, planners, um, as I said, it was really important that, um, that the building itself addressed the street, that it be from, um, both a public point of view and from the residents' point of view, that, um, retail should be operated there to increase the, uh, the, the, um, the, the possibility of cafes and other activities on, on the street, Old Haymarket at the time. And I said this at the first, um, planning meeting, it was an absolute disgrace, no-go area. Urban Splash developed this site. They'd also developed in, in conjunction with, um, uh, Travelodge, um, to actually, um, develop the two buildings on the site. Um, they have given the whole area a massive injection that it, that it needed at the time and that was fully supported by planners at that time. Um, they also, the council also contributed to the, the, the streetscape in terms of the landscaping proposal and the, uh, paving, uh, pattern, which is distinct from anywhere else in, um, the city. Um, and those things were really at the forefront of the discussions. I also go, go back to 2001 in that, um, residents who lived on the Victoria Street side, um, made representations to Nick Small and Nick will, will be able to, to verify this, that, um, buses, buses revving and idling and doing exactly what they're doing now, um, was existing outside the Abbey, um, building and the Sheffield buildings over and adjacent to Victoria Street. Um, Nick will, um, will verify, I'm sure, um, whether verbally or in writing, that he had discussions with the bus companies, Stageco, Sereva, um, whoever was about then, about these issues. Um, all gave guarantees that this would, would, um, cease. Um, yesterday, I can still hear, uh, buses massively rever, revering on Victoria Street. And it's quite, um, convenient that we find that actually most of those people that lived there originally and made those representations, um, no longer live here anymore, um, except for Michelle and, um, her sister and father. Um, you know, that, that is actually, I can hear that from my balcony at the back. So, you know, all of those things are, um, are still happening 21 years later. So, uh, whilst we have an, an improving, um, ability to use technology and that is uh, open to the, um, to the operators here, um, this doesn't guarantee that this, this issue will, will, will cease. Equally, I think the point of, um, Michelle was that, you know, these, um, primarily, uh, operators are out to earn profits. Uh, once one of those, um, uh, you know, becomes.
Mr. Ford, can I please ask that you stick to the proposal again, please? And if you can, just close the close on your comments as well, please.
I think, fair enough. Um, I think the issue is that, um, you know, that the, any management of this, and it still is on point this, by the way, is that, um, effectively, um, you know, the management will be pared off once, uh, if, if one of the companies becomes into financial difficulty. I think also the physicality of having these new four buses, whilst we are, um, we understand democratic processes, um, where everybody said the compromise or everybody who's opposing here has said the compromise is being willing to be undertaken and accepted. The thing is, is that the four new buses are far too close and proposed far too close to the buildings, um, that exist and again, almost channel the street. Um, I would ask, would you want to walk out of your front door and face the side of six, four buses? And your only perspective is either up or down the street. Now we have another thing where we can connect back to the city in, in that if there's anybody that, you know, is visiting and coming from Lime Street, they can come down St John's Lane, they can see a front door and they can see retail on the ground floor. Not a side, whole side of buses, but becoming masked and, um, subjugated from the city centre environment that we've invested in. Equally, there's a, a proposed, um, there's a vacant site, which I know, um, the university, the School of Architecture have used many times as a site to propose cultural activities, young persons, um, theatres, um, marketplaces, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This will be the death knell for any potentiality on that site. And finally, when you, we talk about human error and the things that have happened along Preston Street, this set of parking bays allows or, or effectively means that any bus coming in from Victoria Street needs to turn its wheelbase towards the building. If there is a mechanical error or if there is, um, human error, somebody having, um, a, um, a seizure, one of the drivers having a seizure, one of them being distracted, et cetera, et cetera. It effectively will damage and come into contact with the building by, you know, even at any time of the day, that's a real problem. Obviously, those who were, um, would be in the, in the, in the, using the cafe would be in immediate danger. But I think that's something that needs to be considered by the councillors. That's me. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for your contribution. Um, can I just, that's the last of, um, all the sense of this evening. So can I just thank you all for taking the time out, um, to come and make those contributions? Um, it's appreciated. Um, and, you know, whilst we have already considered all the written information and the objections, it's, it's always really helpful when making a decision to actually hear from people who this would impact. So thank you. And also to obviously have the officers' response so we have further clarity. So I would like to thank you all for your contribution. Can I just ask finally, would any officers just like to make a final comment before we look to make the decision? Fernando?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say that we've, I mean, we've obviously gone through all the, the objections myself and, and Oliver personally yesterday and, and provided responses and we've provided similar responses to today. I think that we've also here today, the, the bus operators making clear commitments. And I think that there, it has been raised also some, some questions through the, the chat while, whilst we were speaking. I think somebody's asking about legislation and how things are going to be enforceable. As I said, the commitments that the bus operators are, are making, that is underpinned by a lease agreement with Mercy Travel. And the lease will have clauses with determination or clauses that will involve fines and everything like that. But as I said, I don't think we, we are going to ever get to that stage because you have a clear commitment from, from bus operators. And I think that it's in everyone's best interest to, to get this right and that's what we're trying to do here. I mean, as I said, I'll send more information to Dr K after this about the, the, their quality and the options we have to kind of improve noise, eh, isolation for, for the building. But I have to say that, I mean, I've gone through message travel information they have provided. And it's, I, I agree, it's quite difficult to understand what they're putting a diagram, diagram because it's, it's that difficult. I mean, I've had to actually zoom in myself to understand what's happening there. I think Simon has summarized very, very well what, what basically information is, is provided. So I hope that that, that satisfies the, the requirement from, from the committee. But again, we, basically that, that's all we have to say and that's our, our proposal. So that, that's it. Really thank you very much for, for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Liz, if you've got any comments?
Thanks, Sharon. Um, yeah, I've got a few comments really. Um, I know, and this is no, no, um, disrespect or question on the integrity of council officers or the people that are here from Mercy Travel, because I know that you've said, don't judge us on the past, but on the future. And I know Fernando, you commented that, um, you have no doubt that, um, the promises will be honoured on site. As somebody who sat on the committee in November, those promises were made then, that this would be monitored and that this would be, um, training would be put in place. And I take on board the comments that you're saying that this isn't operational. But for residents who live in this area, this is operational and they haven't seen that commitment. So you must surely be able to understand the lack of faith that they have at this point and why they feel frustrated and let down. And I think that's something that, that has to be taken on board. And really in terms of engaging with, with communities, we need to do better. And I think that we, we need to take that on board. I know that Dr Bird particularly asked us to consider a number of points. Um, unfortunately, they're outside of the remit of this committee. We are only here to, to act on the, the T R O. So apologies, but we, we can't consider your wider points. I do back up what Sharon said. Thank you, everybody, for being so eloquent and also so respectful in this meeting. Um, I appreciate that because it is a, a situation where you feel, feel frustrated and I understand that and take that on board. The points that, that, that really is key for this committee is that in November, we deferred on the understanding that Mercy Travel could confirm if the spaces would definitely be required. The information that Mercy Travel have provided in terms of the graph doesn't do that for me. There's been no methodology around it. I've been expected to, to make a decision with, with no clear rationale as to how that information has been come to and arisen. And also without seeing the eight bays that we already approved, operational and in process. Um, and I also take on board that this is not usual or normal times. And we are being asked to make a decision outside of usual and normal times when we haven't seen the bays that were approved in operation. And, you know, your own comments were, it's really hard to express. It's almost a dark art to guess how much the, the, we're going to need. And yet what we asked for in the committee was confirmation that they would definitely be required. I haven't had that tonight. And so for me, um, I would find it incredibly difficult to approve that those four bays are, are put in place. Thanks, Sharon.
And so I'll just make some comments and then obviously, um, Liz and I, um, will have a quick discussion over text, um, and then obviously we'll confirm the decision. So I think, again, I can't thank you all enough, even officers as well, for taking the time out. This is a very important issue, um, and we need to make sure that it's considered rightly to make sure it's the right decision. Um, for me, you know, public transport and active, I don't know if I went off then, sorry, my screen went blank. Um, and active travel is a real priority for us as a council. I see in the city centre, bus lay, buses laying over in unapproved laybys and buses, you know, empty travelling across the city centre. So I can understand the concept of the bus hub and the benefits that it would bring. However, I'm not confident in the numbers that have been presented this evening on the usage. So I know a lot of modelling has taken place, but as my colleague Liz has said, the, what we agreed in November is that we, it would be measured to see whether the additional four bays would be required. So again, as we've heard, a lot of commitments from the bus operators and Mercy Travel about the supervision and management that would be put in place, I'm very much welcome that. Roger, do you want to come in?
Uh, yes, Joe, it's, it's just to clarify, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you'd finished, uh, before you went off to make your considerations. I just wanted to clarify that the, uh, the original proposals were advertised in August 2019. So there's actually two years from that date. So there is another further year where you could defer consideration on the, on these additional measures. Uh, secondly, in relation to the, the swapping of the loading bay and the loading ban, I think they're actually meant to improve access to the bays that are already in. So you may wish to actually put those measures in place while either deferring on the other four or deciding not to proceed on the other four. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so going back to the comments, so there's a lot of commitments made and it is very welcome. But based on the information and the evidence that we have seen since the last committee, we need to have that reassurance that what is being committed is actually delivered. So in terms of what we are looking for the decision to be made and based on all the conversations this evening and the representations from you all, I'm welcome. You know, thank you again, can't thank you enough, is getting words incorrect. So taken on board, this is the information provided by Roger from Legal and, and also the conversations that have taken place this evening. Um, I would like to say that we approve the loading, um, the loading bay with changes, um, but we defer the four additional days until the eight that have previously been approved are in full operation and the supervision is in place. Is that clear?
Uh, yes. So I think the recommendation would be that the recommendations approved, apart from the provision of the four further bus stands on Old, Old Haymarket and a decision on man is deferred. of the four further bus stands on Old Haymarket and a decision on mine is deferred until future time.
Roger, sorry to interrupt. Does that deferal mean that it must come back to committee before anything?
Well, I'm sure it would, but you can make that explicit that it would be.
Can we make that explicit, please, that it must come back to committee?
Yep, can they.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just, obviously before we close the meeting, can I just say, tonight's meeting has been, everyone has been extremely respectful and it's been appreciated. Can I please ask people to extend that when taken to social media to discuss the proposals and the bus hub? Because obviously both Liz and I, all councillors, and we are obviously, you know, elected members, but we have to come into this meeting impartial and we have to listen to the views of everybody. So we, as we, you know, Liz responded to say, we will consider all objections and we will listen to people fairly. But I just ask for people to be respectful on social media about this issue as well, please.
Is it possible just to quickly try and give some assurances to our residents for the next few days? I realise you've made your decision. Is that possible?
Is that you, Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to assure the residents who have on this meeting today that in the morning, ourselves and Areva will speak and we will look to put some supervision in now and make sure we're getting things right now. You, you've made your decision, respect that, but we'll, we'll look to do that urgently. You know, we are absolutely committed to making this work and not disturbing people. So there's, there's clearly problems now. We will, we will get on board and on top of those right now. I just really wanted to make that point before everybody went. We are committed to getting this right. I think, Howard, is there anything you wanna add to that or Richard?
No, only, only what you've said, Matt. That's fine. We'll have that chat at eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, and there needs to be better information presented as well, you know, but that's just an own goal, I'm afraid. So we'll have to look at that and we need to look at times like evenings as well. So, yeah, we are committed to getting this right. I just wanted to make that comment as we closed. So thank you.
So I am now going to close the meeting and I know I've said it numerous times, thank you all for attending. Thank you.